I can give you my phone turned down.
Okay. It would have come in a minute. Names. Anything else for public discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda and amendments dated January 3rd?
So I did change the minutes because she had a motion to go through my court session. And so I took that out because that shouldn't be in there.
Melissa, did you, did you see my email there?
I corrected that. I was just telling them that they are.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Pardon?
To approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second up.
Whacker. Is that how you say your last?
Whacker.
Whacker.
Whacker. Yeah. Whacker. Whacker. Okay. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This is regional.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here on this.
Good morning.
What looks to be a lovely day out in the winter comes. So I'll collect one through the finances. The most recent financials that we have, like the market.
Yeah. Yeah, we have pretty, pretty much business as usual in November. Still seeing pretty high in pay, in patient fall up on our third floor. Really still a mix, a mix of stuff. Our, our, our providers doing a great job of keeping the sick there. And, you know, really feeling like we have the ability to care for those pay, those pay here instead of sending them out. Some, some, some are high clinic vol- volumes just due to people being want to be seen by the end of the year. Looking at a pretty, pretty significant market adjustment for our staff here in Jan- January. Not as significant as the previous year. We're kind of seeing some of those wages even out. Quite, quite a bit, but we still have to be competitive with the mark, with the mar- mar- market. So some staffs still seeing pretty significant wage adjustments. Some. Infection control in our clinics and our third floor. So that was a good pro- a good project done. We had the public bid and hearing for our maintenance shed. That was received by Bob Becker Construction. So we are beginning the process of that. I think with an ending date prob- probably sometime here at the end of 2021, 2020. And then just working on our bu- budget now for fiscal year 2024. Our year end is here at the end of June. So already looking at that for next year. I'm sure you guys are too. And really just hea- health, healthcare is so unknown. It feels like at this time, just in terms of more pay, in terms of more patients, wanting to come to the ER and not want, 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 wanting to wait to be seen in the clin- clinic, clinic, clinic. Our providers do a really good job getting people in who want to be seen. But for, but for some of us, the only way without insurance to be seen. So just contin- just con- continuing to work on that. And then just, it just feels like there's more and more sick people all, all of the time. So our inpatient volumes just continue to be at a high level whenever here we expect them to go, to go down and they just don't. So any questions for me?
How do you think your budget's going to do compared to last year?
You know, it's too early to tell.
Too early?
It truly is. So I would hate to hazard a guess at this point. As we roll in all the numbers, we have a better feel, but we're not there yet. Let us meeting individually with each of our leaders to go through their individual departmental budgets. And as we roll those up, one of the things we're challenged with right now is getting a good forecast on the intentional numbers that go into creating some of the patient volumes. We're seeing higher than anticipated and higher than ever volumes in our inpatient units, in our emergency department, in some of our key outpatient areas. And we don't know if that's just a fluke or if it's a long-term sustainable thing. So some of that, we know there was a little bit of catch-up from COVID, COVID-related activity. But some of this is, is completely unrelated. We know we've had some pediatric respiratory illnesses and adult respiratory illnesses again. And we're certainly seeing those. We've had essentially full inpatient census for, you know, a longer period of time than we would have expected. Our surgery volumes are still very high and very strong. So we get a better feel for what the numbers will look like. Better forecast.
You got the good and bad. It's good that you're busy, but it's bad that you're busy.
Right. It's great that we're busy and it's great that patients are using us. The bottom line is we do have good coverage. You know, we have the patients in our communities around the county using Kusud Regional Health Centers, well, it's patients from outside of Kusud County. So that's a great thing. You know, our patients appreciate the fact that we're there and respect us and, and use us. And so as we build upon that, strategically, one of the things we're looking at is, you know, some improvement or maybe an improvement, but additional services, especially related to behavioral health. That's a significant data in this community. So. How was that for an answer essentially?
Yeah. It's, it's kind of where we're at. We're not going to tell you.
Yeah. It's too early.
Wages are going to be a big deal.
Wages are a big deal and, and for you and for us to health insurance and.
Yeah.
You know, premiums are very high. You know, liability insurance is just very high and just all of those kinds of things. So the most supplies are based on some individual supply issues.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. We let you off pretty easy today.
Pretty, pretty easy. And this is one of the easiest for a wonderful day.
Donna, was Doug going to come up or are you doing it alone?
I, he knows about it. This is pretty brief. I don't even know.
Okay. Go ahead, Donna.
I think we just need a signature. A couple of weeks ago, we met with Willmark regarding employee group retention. And they just said the binder agreement that we need a signature to authorize that. And then I'll start working on those employee meetings.
Okay. Sounds good. Do I have a motion for us to sign the binder agreement with our insurance? I have a motion by flat. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Carter?
Do you have?
Any discussion on it? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried again.
I think I've got Mark with that yellow.
Yep. I'll let you finish this. You write better than I do.
Not necessarily.
They can actually read it if you do it.
You might have got away with those and we're going to decline those. If you can just mark, decline that interested and give them.
If you're. I brought my last papers with me too.
Did you give them?
I'll bring my papers by after going in. Or will you be around or?
Well, I'll sooner get.
We can put them in.
Full session going on.
Okay. Yeah, no, I didn't.
Will you be here this afternoon? Okay. I'll stop in sometime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Does anybody have an objection if we go to John Tolbert and let him do his?
No, it's fine.
Jack, can you find it? Okay. Sounds good. John, do you want to? We'll, we'll, we'll let you get done. Yeah.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here and bring you all up to date on what we're looking at through the Drainage District Association right now. I know a question that has been on a lot of counties' minds that I hear a lot about, of course, is carbon pipelines. I don't know if you're in the habit of any of them.
Two of them.
Two of them.
But the legislature concession now, as of yesterday. And my understanding is there will be several bills offered this year that'll take various, various approaches to dealing with, I think specifically the eminent domain issue. Haven't seen any of those bills yet. A lot of rumors, but nothing in writing yet. But with the, with the pace of legislative session and the deadlines they have, I would expect that we'll, we'll see bills start to come up pretty quickly. And I think we'll know probably by the end of January what those bills are going to look like. At that point, IDDA will make a decision what we want to be involved in or not. Want to register on them and actively involve in lobbying. But I know there's a lot of concern about the eminent domain process. And I think the legislature is going to try to address that in some way, shape, or form. I don't know exactly what else the legislature has on the agenda for this year. Again, there's a lot of, a lot of news reports out in terms of some of the things they're going to be looking at. With respect to the drainage, we had a bill last year that was something called 500 that was offered by Senator Guth. IDDA closed that bill along with a lot of other people, a lot of other groups. And whether that bill is going to be back or not, I don't know. I hope it probably will be. I don't know why they're expecting a different result this year, but we'll, we'll watch it anyway.
What was that bill?
What was?
What was that bill or the summary of it, I guess?
Yeah, what it does, what it did, yeah, well, good question, what it did. When the, when the bill first came out, I read it four times and I couldn't figure it out. And it takes two pages of drainage statutes and converts it into about 12 pages of statutes. And it turns it into a very complex situation in terms of notification requirements and bid requirements. It sets up, you know, right now, all drainage districts are pretty much treated the same. This bill would have created different levels depending on acreages. So four different drainage districts in the same, same county could have had four different standards to meet under, under state law depending on what size those districts were. It was very complex. It was very difficult to understand. When a bill comes out in the legislature, there are three things that a group can do. An IDDA is one of those groups. You can register in favor. You can register as undecided. You can register as opposed, or you can do nothing and just say that bill doesn't impact us. On that particular bill, there were 30 to 40 groups and individuals that were registered and not one that was registered in favor. So the bill has a lot of that.
Yep.
So we'll be watching that. Other thing I'd talk about at the federal level, those of you that are around a while know that this issue with waters in the United States has been sort of a political ping pong game that every time administration comes in, they, they change the rules on the waters in the United States. We had Obama that put a rule in. We had Trump that came along and reversed the Obama rule and put his own rule in. Now you've got President Biden who's come along who wants to reverse the Trump area rule and put his own rule back in. There was a new rule issued the last month of, excuse me, the last week of December. Whether that's going to actually go into effect is a good question. There are two things that could happen. First of all, there is a US Supreme Court case, it's called the Sackett case, which directly goes to the EPA ability to regulate water in the United States. And that case has been heard. There's a decision on it expected early this year sometime. From what I've read is that the Supreme Court rules in favor of the Sacketts and against the EPA. The new rule is going to have to be scrapped and they're going to have to start over. So that's one thing that could happen. The other thing that could happen is what my expectation is, is that there will be lawsuits filed to stop the rule. Somehow, somewhere, they're going to find a fellow judge to put stay on it. And that will take its, you know, take its due process, put it out of self-help order. By that time, I don't know, another new administration comes in and changes the rule again. This is ridiculous. It is. And it's true on both sides. Plant politics with water quality. The new rule retains the concept of what they call next. And what that means is if, well, this little stream that I've got running through the back of my acreage is connected to a bigger stream. And that bigger stream is connected to a river, which is a water in the United States. And since that stream is connected to a stream, which is connected to a river, that stream is also covered by the waters in the United States. The disappointing thing about the rule is it puts those kind of situations up for interpretation. So it's going to be a case-by-case decision in terms of whether or not something falls under the jurisdiction of the water. Yes. And depending on who you talk to in the EPA office, you could get a positive answer or you could get a negative answer. And we, speaking for IDDA, do not want to have a situation that creates itself where you all as drainage district trustees, every time you want to do a drainage improvement or a drainage repair, have to contact the Department of Natural Resources and get permission because that potentially is a water in the United States and that might need Clean Water Act for a minute. So this is, this is going to take some time to play out, but we will be watching it very closely. The last thing I'll talk about is, is something that, that we feel is safe during each districts and directly to the landowners in drainage districts, quite a bit of money. So going back three to four years, what the law used to say is that if you had a drainage repair in excess of $50,000, you had to get an engineer's opinion. I had a lot of counties say, you know, this day and age, $50,000 goes like that when you're talking about repairs. That needs to be increased. And we had some legislators that agreed with us. And so they came in the session, I think this was three years ago, and looked at a variety of numbers and terms. So, okay, what, what do you increase that to? And then what they decided on was called the competitive bid threshold, which is something that has been part of state law for quite some time. So they tried that, they tied that to drainage repairs. And that is a number that is set by the DOT Office of Local Systems. And the beauty of that number is that you don't need the legislature to come back and change. It's changed by the DOT. So when that law changed, the amount rose to $139,000. So at that point, if you had a repair less than $139,000, you didn't have to have an engineer's opinion. What has happened since then is popped the local system last year and decided to raise the amount. And effective January 1st, that amount is now $196,000. So you can go up to almost $200,000 now on a repair and not have to have an engineer's opinion. Now, keep in mind, that's just a requirement. You can get an engineer's opinion anytime. You know, if you're going on to repair and you, you know, somebody hasn't looked at that ditch for a while or it's going to be a little complicated repair and you think you're better off getting an engineer's opinion, certainly you can do so. You all know as trustees, that's going to increase the cost of the repair, but sometimes better safe than sorry. So that is just a requirement, but January 1st, we're at $196,000. So I want to make sure you're aware of that. So that's what I have this morning. We have to respond to questions.
You guys got any questions? If not, thank you, John.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. We'll see you on the 25th.
Two weeks, two weeks from July.
Yeah, in this room? Okay.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Let the record show that we received a report from the IDPS. Mark had to show it and so do you. Yep. And we'll go back to Public and, Keith Todd, is that, is Todd still out there?
He's in the background, I heard best I know.
Yeah.
He's in here. He wants to go up that way.
Yeah. Can you get me in? You wanted this for the public employment relations?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. You don't have to do that. And she requested full session.
Should I have done it on there?
I think so.
Yeah, thumbs up.
We'll see if it comes in.
You want me to hang up and try it again? She gave me her cell number as well.
Down somewhere.
We need a cell number?
No, I haven't.
We just got to have the number for the phone somewhere. Jack?
I've never dialed on here before, have you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Just push new call.
Up here?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. That's her cell. I tried to rock it. It's on there.
Try your office.
Okay.
This is Renee von Bucheren. I'm sorry, I'm not available right.
Come back to it.
Is she expecting us later on or?
I didn't, I didn't talk to her, so.
Oh, okay.
I will probably.
You don't? Want to wait half hour and see me back?
Give me your cell number again there. I'll try that again.
Hello?
Hi, Renee is on line three.
All right. So she's here. Renee?
Hey, sorry. I couldn't quite hang up from my other call picking up.
Okay. Hey Renee, do you want it to go in closed session, correct?
Yes.
I would need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 21.51C, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
I looked it up.
Are, are we able to go into closed session without it being on the agenda? That way?
Yeah.
As long as, as long as reasons are stated in open session.
The reason is, is we're going into, we want to go into labor negotiations with the bargaining unit.
Yeah. And the reality is under 20.17, it's not, it's not something that falls under chapter 21, so.
I have a motion by Mr. Plath. I'll second Mr. Plath's motion to go into closed session. Do a roll call vote.
Plath?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Yes. We're going to dismiss you guys. It's up to Todd. I don't really know. Todd, there were two janitors.